So you might get a little bit of feedback. I turn them up so you don't have to get so close to them. Ready when you are.
Okay, call the December meeting of the Cecil Township Planning Commission to order. I have seven oh five tonight. First item on the agenda is approval of minutes from October.
So we have a few blanks to fill in on the meeting minutes, so I'm gonna make a motion to table the minutes from the October nineteenth meeting.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion to table from Dave. Got a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Alright, we're tabled. Alright, review of previous decisions. Jack, is there anything from last month's? Actually, two months of Board of Supervisors meetings relevant to our previous...
I believe I forwarded everything to you. Dan, do you remember anything that... Something tonight?
The supervisors did make, and I think we did that at the October meeting.
Right. Yeah.
Other than that, I don't believe there's anything else to go over, because we didn't have a meeting last month, obviously.
We made recommendations on, in October, on the Han Farms consolidation, Alta Piana Phase Six revision, and Shiloh Industrial Contractors. Were those all?
I believe those are, those are all...
Those were all approved by the board.
Okay. And then the, what about the Interstate Highway Plan Development Overlay District?
We didn't do anything with that, because you wanted to wait till the rest of the board was here tonight to discuss that, so I'm prepared to give you an update, to get everybody back up to speed again on the zoning ordinance and the, that Interstate Highway development issue. So if we can get through the plans, and then we can do that at the end, if you'd like.
That's perfect. I just didn't know if they moved forward without our recommendation or not on...
No, no, no.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Okay, we have nothing on the agenda for old business, so we'll get on to the new business then. We have application two zero two three dash zero zero three seven.
It's Klaafik.
I'm sorry?
Last name is Klaafik.
Klaafik?
Yep.
Okay, subdivision number one?
This was a long time coming. I believe it started in twenty twenty-one, and she came in about a few weeks ago with this, asking that parcel you see in front of you, if you look up on the screen, that was the...
My screen on.
Yeah, I apologize, the monitors aren't working right now. She is cutting that piece out. Actually, that was, these plans were done in twenty twenty-one, but she never got around to bringing it to the Planning Commission. I believe you guys have the application. Mrs. Klaafik owns all this property, all the way around there, and she's cutting that piece out for her daughter. Zoom in a little bit, if you want.
She also has another lot as well?
Well, there were two, there were two plans, and while this is her house down here, she, she had asked that this be given to, to her daughter, so she still owns all of this. Sorry about the feedback.
Your daughter has that adjacent property then?
No, well, I believe there was, I guess there was divorce or something, and she's given part of it to her daughter and the other two are son-in-law. I guess they already have that house there.
On, on the piece that they're cutting out, what's the distance from the closest point to the property line? Does it give a distance?
I mean, it's within the forty-foot building line. You're talking about...
The low, the lowest portion.
This one?
Yeah, that, that part.
I believe in its three hundred and sixty-eight feet. Got three thirty-nine over there.
I think he's looking for the distance here.
Yeah, it's probably only, it's less than fifty feet.
Oh, oh, here, I'm sorry.
But that, yeah.
I don't know the distance.
Well, it says a forty-foot building line, and it's inside the forty-foot building line, so it's, it's less than forty feet. I mean, you definitely couldn't build anything in that little triangle that's being created. I, I don't, I don't know the reason for it, other than just get access on the other side.
Yeah, I've not talked to John about it. This was done, like I said, twenty twenty-one.
Dan, you have a review letter?
I, I do, I have a review letter dated December twentieth.
It looks like it's just administrative, as far as the review letter is concerned.
Yeah, that's what I was looking at.
It is, they're, they're administrative items. The only thing I just question, again, if there's been any sewage planning done on this. The, the existing septic system is shown on Lot Three, so that we know the house is served. Typically, what they'll require, like on a remnant parcel of a hundred acres, is just to put some sort of a note on there regarding, you know, whether, whether it be considered undevelopable or, or not developable until, until such time as there's sewage information provided. But my note on the plan is just proof of review and approval by the Washington, the Washington County Sewage Council should be contacted to determine what's required. So it's in my letter, if, if you want to consider approving this by letter. I don't, I don't know what Mr. Mouts, whether he'll respond to this or not. We'll see.
Does that include the two letters that Washington County's already issued?
I, I don't know, Jack. What, what letters? Is it the County Planning Commission?
Yeah, they sent, sent me both letters, and I forwarded them on the gateway.
I...
Okay, no problem.
I, I probably have them, but that wouldn't, the Planning Commission letters are different than the, than the sewage letter. The Sewage Council would be different.
Okay.
Despite, sorry, despite the oddness of that lot line, she still owns the, the property behind it, right?
Correct.
So she's not, we're not creating something odd.
Yeah, you're not cutting her off.
Yeah, we're not creating something odd there. It's, she still owns...
Right.
The adjacent property.
Yeah, yeah. And that's, I started asking, I was, that was the gears turning, I was, I think we're okay. Gateway letter, December...
Yeah, we have nothing from the Sewage Council, but Planning, Washington County Planning Commission had no issues with the plan.
You wanna table this, I can follow up with the Washington County Sewage.
Well, I think it's covered in Gateway's letter, so if we approve it contingent upon addressing the items.
That's fine.
I, I just don't think, i- if he doesn't get, if he can get something before the supervisors are meeting, Jack, we could, and gets the plan revised, otherwise...
Okay.
We'll hold it from the supervisors' meeting.
You mean John Mouts?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, honestly, she came in out of the blue, didn't, didn't call or anything, and, and said, I need to get this approved, and I started looking at it like this is from twenty twenty-one. And then went with Liz, and we have another plan, and I think this one was the one that was supposed to be recorded and approved first, but we have another one that, this is the overall plan, so it's... I'd, I'd agree with you, I mean, it's just a matter, I can reach out to John Mouts, see if he'll, you know?
Well, we did record the first plan, that's done.
Right.
So this is the second one, for the, like you say, for the overall.
Do we have any more questions? Any motions?
I move to approve application number two zero two three dash zero zero three seven, Clay Patch subdivision number one, contingent upon satisfaction of the items outlined in the Gateway Engineers' letter dated December twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Alright, moving on, application two zero two three dash zero zero three eight, Heinrich, subdivision plan number one.
Kerry Crider from KLH. This is basically just a lot line revision between the two properties. We addressed all of Dan's comments. If anybody has any questions?
I don't have any questions, does anybody else?
No.
Date on the Gateway letter is December eighteenth.
So Kerry, you're just subdividing a piece off and giving it to the other property?
That's all, yep.
It's really just a lot line revision?
That's all it is.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
And they have addressed all comments that I had, so...
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Application two zero two three zero zero three eight, Heinrich subdivision, plan number one, based on all comments of the December eighteenth letter from Gateway having been addressed.
I second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Abstain.
Okay, motion carries. Alright, next item on the agenda, application two zero two three dash zero zero three nine, Omatic subdivision plan number one.
Automatic.
Omatic? Thank you. I try. My apologies.
Make it as big as possible here.
You got like an itchy trigger for your...
Sounds like hit or miss.
There we go.
I'll just leave it at that.
That's it, yep. You want me to, go ahead, Dan? Automatics?
Yeah, well, yeah.
Just not because we...
The commission would...
Okay. So the plan is to subdivide this parcel off of intersection of three roads, King Road, Rising Road. Rising Road and Prothea Road. Yeah.
Prothea's up on top, Grange comes down here, then Rising, and then...
Okay.
I thought he was just throwing a fourth road in there for fun.
Grange, okay, okay.
So there's the, the proposed subdivision line. Existing house here, existing house here, and existing trailers here. There are currently four occupied mobile homes on that property. So we have a note on here that once the people move out of these mobile homes, they can no longer be rented. They can't be occupied until sewage facilities are met for those.
There's still four under? Four now? Okay, because there's already been a couple.
Oh, there was ten before that.
Okay.
Right, there was ten, yeah. And I got a letter today from R.C. Cassidy from the Sewage Council, I think, coffee tonight, stating that they didn't have any problems with the subdivision. It's not creating any new sewage facilities.
And you said there is a note on your plans to not have any new occupants until...
Big note.
A big note, thank you. Thank you.
Was there a letter on this one, Dan?
No.
No.
I had really, really recommended because we...
I was looking for it. I guess that's why.
Review it. But there's, there's really just some minor administrative cleanup facts, as long as they, you know, specifically what, what R.C. Cassidy from the Washington Sewage County says, after reviewing the Omatic subdivision, is my opinion that the Washington County Sewage Council has no problems with this subdivision, as no testing is needed or required for both parcels are already served by existing systems. The only involvement with Sewage Council might be to perform a visual inspection of the parent track. Again, this sewage is being created by the subdivision, so no testing is required, so... We have a paper trail, if anybody asks, or BP whatever, related to this, Kerry's got a note on there, related to the trail, so I'm fine with it. I, I would just, I would just look through with, depending on any minor comments we give or... We can see for a feeling. Okay, any other questions?
Concerns? Motion?
I'll make a motion to approve. Application two zero two three zero zero three nine, Omatic subdivision, plan number one, contingent upon any administrative notes from Gateway for, for KLH engineers.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion to approve in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Abstain.
Okay, Dave's abstaining. Motion carries. Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Okay, application two zero two three dash zero zero four zero, Muse Elementary School Playground Site Plan.
I believe that's Kerry, oh, I'm sorry. I didn't even see these, so, Liz took Kerry's. What do you need up here?
Uh, whatever they want, you do the, right there, yeah, that's fine, right there. Good evening, Jordan Mayer with KTMAC School District. So, pretty straightforward, I had a playground area to Muse Elementary. Unfortunately, we underestimated how much play area we would need when we built the building. So we're actually designing, it's more designed towards the K to two age group. We're gonna have a new playground area, just specifically for that age group. And it's gonna be just shy of ten thousand, or, yeah, ten thousand square feet turf slash rubber playground area. Stormwater management was a discussion. We actually had a parking surface designated for the original Muse build that was not included in the construction. So we redid a study. We, we do have the stormwater management capabilities as is. We did provide a response today to Dan on all his comments. I'm not sure if you had a chance to review them yet, probably not, it's just, just this morning. But again, we did, we did provide a response, so, pretty straightforward here tonight, but any questions you have, I'll be happy to answer.
So is there, is there fence proposed around all the...
We are gonna do a fence around with two exit gates, and that's all ADA specs.
So is this the fence detail on the...
Yes.
Yeah, I got, I don't, I don't want, the fence, though, I have to get a separate permit for Liz on the fence. I, I'm not sure she addressed that with them yet, but I'm not sure she's... It's not your main of the site plan. Honestly, Dan, this, this is one that went to her, I, I haven't seen this one. Right, right.
I apologize if this is off-topic, but isn't Muse the one that, there's gonna be a site connector to the trail, or is, is it a different elementary school that I'm not remembering?
That's, that's doing the work.
Okay.
Yeah, it's been discussed, I, I think it, yeah, and it could come in there anywhere along that line.
My only concern was just the security of the playground, like how...
Well, that area, so the playground's behind, so all that area is already blocked off. So if you go up there now, we, we had the intention of having a play area that we undershot, that's where we're building now, but if you go there now, the back parking lot is partitioned off, so cars or vehicles, nobody can get behind there, and we're actually using that as a play area during the, the school days now. But, and then furthermore, behind the building are each fenced off on the sides, and then we're adding the additional fencing for the new playground area as well.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm thinking about how sometimes young and older people make poor choices, and I want, I want to protect any investment that the school district has.
Yeah, so there are gates, big swing gates that block off the entire parking lot area to the back building.
Okay.
And furthermore, man gates are fences that go behind the building, which is where this would be. So...
I'd almost like to see that the other end of the field, so the kids never have to cross the parking lot. You know, they come down the end of the building.
Right, the playground is behind the actual building.
Right.
And so the, the entire building is in front, and there's no car access back to that area.
Except for like morning drop-off, evening pickup, right?
Well, they can go back, but the, the playground's actually behind that set of building there.
Right, right. That's what I'm saying, like the kids are gonna cross the parking lot to get there, but it's not open to the public during school hours.
Correct, well, from the school, that will just exit through the back, so they won't go through the parking lot for the use of the, uh, playground.
No, I'm confused.
How would a, how would a first responder get back there?
We have a, man, I can't tell you the street name right now. So there is a avenue in the back, that gate is always locked, a hundred percent of the time, we never open it, and it's only for the use of first responders or scenario in that issue.
Yeah, we put, we required them to put secondary egress in for, to maintain the construction access, as a secondary means of accessing egress to the property. But I think, when you come around the building, as soon as you come around the building, pass, correct me if, I just want to make sure I'm understanding this right, so you come up the, up the drive, don't turn in to the front, you continue up around the, the cafeteria.
Correct.
And it's gonna be behind the cafeteria, but the kids will have to cross that, like, area.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, I understand what you're saying. Yeah.
There, there's gonna be, they have to cross that back parking lot to get...
Correct, to get into the play area.
To get into the play area, right. But for emergency vehicle access, it's adjacent to the parking lot.
Well, the emergency vehicle access for that would come straight up the hill, just as you explained, around the cafeteria. For the existing playground, we have a emergency avenue that's to the right side of the building, that they can go back to that area.
Yeah.
Sure. An aerial view of that on GIS would help understand it a little bit better.
Yeah, you want to see it, yeah? That's probably the only thing that, I mean, as an, as an overall, that, as a, as a citizen, as a parent, that, that I'm not crazy about the fact that it wasn't planned out so that there wouldn't be a need for the kids to have to cross parking lot to get to the play area, that it's not directly adjacent to the building, like the original play area.
Well, that, that field area that we're building on now was designed as a play area. It just, with the weather, it turns into a mud field, we get less use out of it as an all-natural kind of flat field than if it was an artificial surface. So it was always designed to be a recess area, it was just not as beneficial as we expected. So now we're looking at improvements to make that more useful for the students. So if you can see, so this is our current playground area here, and then this is our proposed site here. So yes, we'll come out here and walk across to this site here.
I, I think your proposed site's up top. The top part of that field.
Right.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So we would exit and come across, and then we discussed the first responder entrance here. So that's the existing, so we won't need a new first responder access to come up over the hill.
And as far as the trail, to your, to your question about future plans, Kristy, on the backside of where they're looking to put this play area, it's really steep, so they wouldn't be bringing the trail down next to the playground area.
This area.
It would probably come down more over on the other, the, the top of the picture. So over sort of school street? Yeah, over on that, that pile on right, right away, it'd probably be a better access point for that future trail that they're talking about.
Okay.
Just from walking that property. Still a good point. Yeah.
I wasn't sure, so I had to ask.
My, my concern, my concern was the stormwater, that they, we had never seen an ASB before, an ASB of the stormwater system, which kind of, that kind of stuff happened, how you have to do them. So they did do an analysis of the existing pond, it's oversized, so there's more capacity there in the pond for this area, it was always planned for, but they threw in numbers and gave this to the board, so we're satisfied with that. And they, they have provided, they have provided a response to our letter, I have no reason to believe that they haven't addressed the comments, so if, if you wanted to, you know, consider this tonight, you could just... take it based upon the, uh, verification of, of them addressing all the comments in my, uh, December twentieth letter.
Any more questions?
Comments? Motion?
I'll make a motion, we approve application twenty twenty-three dash zero zero four zero, the Muse Elementary School Playground Site Plan, contingent upon addressing the items in the Gateway Engineers' letter dated December twentieth, twenty twenty-three.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion to approve in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Jared, have a good one.
Okay, next item on the agenda, application two zero two three dash zero zero four one, Level Up Subdivision.
Subdivision plan up?
Yeah.
Okay. Busy man tonight, Carrie.
Yeah.
So, this is at the corner of Georgetown and Mayview. Existing, um, there's an existing building here in the corner, and this existing warehouse. So, in Community Magazine, Wayne Dollar owns this. Uh, he wants to subdivide this piece off to build a pickleball facility. Stick by it.
Thanks, Eric.
Stick with it. We, yeah, we address all of the comments.
So, so, Carrie, who's making the L-shaped line, which is gonna be the next part of this for the, for the pickleball?
So, it's supposed to be an indoor pickleball facility, you've been on that lot. Who, who owns the current lot that's, Ogiers? How do you spell their name? Yeah.
They, they weren't able to purchase that, because the last I heard, they were gonna, he was gonna try, he wasn't able to purchase that at property, last I heard, when I, uh, spoke with the pickleball guy, he was gonna try to buy that lot.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, he wasn't able to get it?
I, I guess, so, we're subdividing in there.
Okay.
Yep.
So, it's gonna be subdivided, is he that leasing it, or is it a lease parcel, or?
No, he, he wanted to, initially buy the whole thing. Warehouse building that is there.
That's it.
They don't even actually have any employees. Um, they, they bring stuff in in a trailer truck, um, they unload it, they repackage it, and then it goes out. And then if there's no trucks, then there's nobody working, it's, it's like a family situation, I guess, I'm not exactly sure, but...
Okay, well, it's not true, you did subdivision.
Correct.
They, they have addressed the comments. Uh, but Carrie has provided a response letter, um, I've not had a chance to look at it yet, but it appears that he's addressed everything. So, I, I would just, if you wanted to consider the subdivision separately, uh, tricky, it's used in applications. I would just make it contained in my December eighteenth letter.
Questions, comments? Motion?
I move to approve application number two zero two three dash zero zero four one, Level Up Subdivision, contingent upon satisfaction of the items outlined in Gateway Engineers' letter dated December eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion to approve in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Okay, David's abstained, motion carries. Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you.
Uh, you ready to go again?
Yeah.
All right. Two zero two three four two, Level Up Conditional Use.
Yeah, I want to bring the site plan up if you can.
Gateway letter is December twentieth on this one.
It's still in there. There we go.
So, this is the, the property that we were just looking at, here is the existing warehouse building. So, that's the L lot, that's the proposed building, parking, stormwater. Overall, I think we have to do a complete, full, whole set of site plans. This, I mean, this was done for, to meet the conditional use application requirements.
Carrie, where's Georgetown Road, and where's, uh, Mayview Road?
Oh, um, maybe just, maybe here, Georgetown.
Georgetown there, maybe there. I thought it was on the other side of the road. Yeah, uh, I'm...
Carrie got something?
Yeah, that's Mayview, that's Georgetown, so it's in that corner.
So, this is basically across from Hills Henderson. It's across from Hills Henderson.
It's across from the elementary, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, here's, here's a better parcel map. This is, this is the intersection of Mayview and Georgetown right here. The parcel outlined in red is the parcel on question that they're gonna use. And then, I, I just was looking, just making sure, um, the requirements, well, well, let's just start off, I mean, in- indoor recreation is a, is a conditional use in the I-one zoning district. That's why they're here for conditional use tonight. And we already have, we have an indoor recreational facility right here already. There's one right at this corner, right there.
And right opposite, right over here as well.
Bianco.
Bianco, baseball's right over there, too.
Oh, yeah, Bianco's, yeah, Bianco's up, I believe.
Bianco, Skyzone.
Bianco's up Springfield, right, right around, right here.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep. So, uh, my, my only concern was, in terms of the setbacks, uh, this particular area, when you're industrial, if you have an industrial, uh, if you have a residential use or a residentially, uh, zone property adjacent to you, setbacks are different. Uh, my opinion is that this is all zone industrial, so that's not the issue. There is a residential property, believe it or not, the Delevade Farm comes all the way around here, circles around. So, technically, uh, you could, you could say this is a residential use here, but in actuality, they use a part of the horse farm is actually a commercial, it's like a riding stable here. So, I, I believe that it's being used commercially, so it's not a total, just like a residential property. It's not like there's a house sitting right here next to the property, so, that was the reason I made this little map. But they're required as a part of the conditional use application to give, give the information. So, within my typical letter, I just run down through the application. Um, they, they're required to give us a vicinity map, they still need to do that, that's not a big deal. Uh, they still need to show all the setbacks on the plan, uh, that would be proposed with the building. Uh, they've given us elevations and contours, uh, they've given us the layout of the property, which is fine. Location of the parking areas, and it appears, Carrie, that you have plenty of parking.
Yeah.
Yeah, there would be, um, I'll go back to his. Side of this one. Side of it. So, he has the parking here established, and there's one space per five hundred square feet of gross, uh, gross area for facility of about forty-eight thousand square feet, ninety-six parking spaces are required, they have a hundred and twenty-five shown. Show their ADA spaces on here, too. Um, they've given us a list of all property owners within three hundred feet. And, uh, they've, no, uh, they've submitted that, those people will have to be notified, you, I think, don't, who does the notification? Okay, so, if the conditional use happens, she'll send out the notification of that. Uh, given us the application, and we still need a narrative statement, Carrie, of what's going on here. Uh, just on general comments, um, the existing conditions plan and this, you know, there's some housekeeping that needs to be done on that. But I just question, if, if you look at
The stormwater.
Look at the other parcel. Um, there's a stormwater management facility that's located back here, that's gonna go away now, right?
Correct.
So, with your plan, are you guys confident that you'll be able to get this all to drain and you'll have sufficient, a big building?
Yeah.
To add to here, all this parking, so you're almost totally impervious. And you have this, these little baby rain gardens, they don't look big enough.
Oh, no, 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 they'll be underground.
Um, area for underground stormwater storage.
Okay.
Yep.
And you can, you can definitely get all the impervious coming that way?
Uh, yeah, that's almost like final, final, final.
I mean, does it grade all in the general direction? That's all I'm asking, okay. And, um, I think, I think that's, that's pretty much my comments, other than, you know, I just wanted to address those couple things.
I know conditional use requires a three-hundred-foot notification that Liz will do, but have you met with the school district or talked with the school district at all? Just, I'm just thinking about traffic, um, and the impact and...
I believe Wayne had talked to them.
Okay.
Um, because he's, the, like, president of this pickleball association.
Hmm.
Um, and they're real involved with community, I mean, they did that in Community Magazine.
Hmm.
Um, so, I believe that he had talked to them. He's talked to a lot of people about, about doing this. You know, where's the best place to put it, about, you know, that type of thing.
But the access to the parcel will change, so it's gonna require a new highway occupancy permit. Uh, this is a state road, have you guys had any discussions with the state about?
Mm-hmm.
What are, what are they saying, you're gonna have to submit a traffic study?
Well, um, I talked to, I feel, I've left him with another voicemail today regarding that, about exactly what we're gonna, what we're gonna have to do.
Well, my, my recommendation would be not to, uh, get to the, get to the public. You'd have to have something prepared for the, for the hearing, because the, if people, once the people are notified, everybody's gonna come in and screen traffic. So, do you know the hours of operation of this place, or they, you know, like, are they different than the hours of operation for the school? Or is this like, uh, do you know if this is gonna be like a eight to, eight in the morning, day to night operation or anything?
Wayne has all that stuff.
You don't wanna come tonight?
Honestly, I told him not to come, because I, I knew this wasn't the conditional use hearing.
What do you think, these people are important?
Thanks, Carrie.
They make the recommendations.
I, I understand.
All right, well, they can help you ferret out the issues before you hit to the supervisors.
Yeah, I think that's gonna be the, the big one.
Yeah.
Obviously, it's...
I mean, you could table it tonight and ask them to come back with more traffic information, too, I mean, I'm, I'm not trying to slow it down, but...
Yeah, but, you know, obviously, you, you can't get the, the approval about the highway permit.
Yeah, but, but, but the problem is that I, I, I mean, the PennDOT doesn't necessarily think of the same issues that, that the township thinks of. Right, I mean, they're, they're, they're not worried about, they're, they do have, they have a portion of Georgetown, right, right? This is state going in this direction, but this portion of Georgetown is ours. I believe. I know Baker's ours that passed here.
I think all of Georgetown is state.
Yeah, all of Georgetown is state, yeah, Baker goes township.
It gets, it gets really busy, it, it gets really busy at, uh, Mayview and, and Georgetown certain times of day, I mean, I mean, we're, we're starting to get
Yeah, I mean, it's gonna be close to a traffic light there.
Yeah, light's gonna become a necessity sooner rather than later. You wonder which, which development's gonna be the one to, to start to break the camel's back.
I just think between Menard and Skyzone and the elementary school, the daycare there, there's also other facilities going up. That's why I'm thinking about traffic and timing and, and all of that, and I think, while it's not necessarily a part of the conditional use application or, um, the hearing, I can easily, easily see that being a condition, um, to be requested, and so, I think it's, it's worth thinking about, discussing, having a, a solid plan in place, and making sure that the communication has happened, particularly with Hills Henderson, um...
Yeah, I mean, you'd have to get some counts out there and somebody to understand how this place is gonna operate, and see what kind of impact it would have in the peak hours, as a minimum. I mean, that's, that's my thoughts, but you could, if you engage a traffic guy, you could talk to Haberman in our office, and he could help you scope it.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm picturing a hundred and twenty-five spots, and how long is someone gonna come in and play pickleball for, an hour or two? So, you're essentially just gonna have cars coming and going all day long.
Doctor's office.
Yeah.
Well, the, the biggest reason for the, for the number of parking spaces is for weekend events that they have, or the tournaments, which aren't held during the day, you know, I mean, during the weekday, um, they're held on the weekends, uh...
That's, that's why the hours of operation, I mean, they could, you know, the, that you could come in and the planning commission could recommend reasonable conditions, which might be hours of operation. Based upon that, so, be good to hear them, though.
Yeah, he's just looking to, you know, keep, keep the ball rolling, that's...
Yeah.
You know, and he's under a lot of time constraints with what he's agreed to do.
What happens when the fad goes away, you know? So, the existing warehouse, their driveway is separate from this driveway?
It's gonna be a, um...
Combined, right?
It's gonna be combined.
It's gonna be combined.
Yeah, 'cause right now, they have that gravel driveway that comes up on the side.
The existing driveway's right here.
Yeah.
It's proposed to be moved to here. That seems to be a better location, because this is what, the school entrance here?
Yep, straight across.
Yeah, it's not quite totally plus, but it's pretty close. It is a little bit off-center, Carrie.
Yeah.
PennDOT will get you on that one. Skew.
That is an entrance only, um, point for the, for the school, it's entrance only, off that point, exit further down, so... So, that might actually... So that might actually help.
How soon would the, would the, uh, the hearing be, if approved tonight? January?
Well, typically the board would, they could go to the board meeting in January and there could be a motion to set the public hearing, so the public hearing would probably be at the next meeting, which would be like February.
Okay.
To, to do it.
Within forty-five days of approval? With two week notice? Isn't that normally it? Like, do you have to, for conditional use hearing? No, to have the hearing.
Submission of application.
Yeah, okay, sorry. I'm a little fuzzy.
Yeah, I'm not sure what the required time is for the hearing, but, right, there, there would be a, a requirement to, to set it up within a certain time period.
Twenty twenty-four?
January.
Yeah.
Planning Commission to get it in February, then we're into March.
Well, then we see the site plan in March, I would think, right? After the conditional use hearing.
Yeah, if it was, conditional use was received, it would come back here for the site plan.
Okay.
Does the subdivision need to be approved first?
You just did, did.
We already did.
Yeah.
Okay, but by the
They could run concurrently.
Yeah. Yeah, we're good on that. The exec can approve the subdivision in January and then immediately take up the conditional use.
I mean, you, you could recommend to move it on tonight with a, with a motion that, that they provide a traffic study and be prepared to present that at the public hearing. It's a recommendation, I mean, it's, again, it's not a requirement of the conditional use. But I think it's gonna be, if they wanted conditional use considered, they're gonna need it. And then they're gonna come back anyway for site plan. And at that time, that's when the traffic study is actually in the, in the unified development ordinance, get asked for it then. They're gonna need it anyhow.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna get prepared, you know? Get everything ready for January, February.
I think just to be prepared, Carrie, if you were prepared to talk about hours of operation and expected use during the day versus, you know, normal use during the week versus when there's tournaments.
Right, yeah, well, I said, I know the tournaments are weekend, weekends only, that I do know. Um, but we could definitely put that, you know, in the schedule and the owner would be here to present that information, you know, on hours and people and so.
I don't have any other questions.
Yeah, I'm good. Anybody else? Motion?
I'll make an emotion to approve application two zero two three zero zero four two, level up conditional use for level up pickleball, um, contingent upon, uh, or with recommendation that hours of operation and, uh, intended usage during weekdays and weekends is clarified along with the traffic study of the area.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion to approve in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Thanks, Carrie.
David Stain, motion carries.
Mr. Kreider, are you done presenting for the evening?
Uh, no. Yes.
Okay.
I'm thinking of traffic counts.
Thank you. Mine has, um, liquid IV in it. You know, the, like, the hydration supplement, I don't, I don't think that electrolytes will be. You as well, Mr. Kreider.
Merry Christmas.
I keep looking around, you say mister. Mr. Kreider.
So.
So I don't think we have a full group here in October.
No, I was in
Wait, everybody.
Cancun.
Yeah.
I wasn't here either.
Christie wasn't here?
Oh, wait, you're right. Christie and Barbara weren't.
See? Remember, you were, you were real, real shy, Jason. Wanted to go over this again. Just making sure, right?
There's a lot going on there.
Yes.
A whole lot.
I can, I can give you a little description, so.
For sure. Dan, can you do like a TED Talk on this, or maybe like one of those sleep apps where you've repeated it so many times?
Yeah. Okay, sorry. I, what I wanted, the first thing I want to talk about is there was a request that came in from a few of the supervisors and Jack and I were asked to put it up for review with the, uh, planning, uh, commission is the fact that there's property over here along, um, along Interstate seventy-nine and Morganza Road, more, uh, more commonly known as the Sabatino property. And so to orient everybody on this map, uh, this is Morganza Road, this is Maple Ridge, uh, with the townhouse development. This is the property that Sabatino came in with originally with just kind of a grading plan. He added in for an application, that the application was finally rejected. So the, the board's concern is, and their driver on this property has been try to keep it all commercial and not residential, that being the property east, I'm sorry, west of Morganza Road. Sabatino owns several parcels out here, this is Traditions of America, which is, you've seen a lot of these plans, this is all approved. But there's other property that he owns, so at the time that he came in and, uh, did this, uh, interstate highway overlay, which we have on our zoning ordinance, that's what this checked line is. These were kind of the parcels that he either owned or had under control at that time. He obviously lost this one. The big one here in green is gone. Uh, but he still does have several remaining parcels. Most importantly, he controls the piece along the interstate here, so again, uh, if, if you recall, and I, I think he came to the planning commission a couple of times with a plan that showed a residential development adjacent to Maple Ridge. And not that the board was necessarily against him doing residential here, but they felt that it was more appropriately all commercial and not mixed use in this particular area with its visibility to the highway and everything else that, that's going on, they didn't think it was appropriate to do residential here, so. Uh, in my discussions, I think very simply, um, this can be addressed with th- this is the actual ordinance, uh, for the interstate highway uh, planned development district, section nine seventeen. So I, I think very simply, it talks about a lot of the same things, there's, there's nothing in here that needs to find, but I think, I think it's the board's desire to limit single-family property, uh, and, and be only permitted on the east side of Morganza Road. So I think we could very easily, within here, um, uh, put some language in here such that uh, when we say uses, uh, single-family residential and land use category, this is only permitted on properties east of Morganza Road. So within the district that we have, it's defined by that checked area only to the east in, in the written verbiage that we would change this, they're not against this, this, uh, this particular ordinance, just wanna get, like I said, the residential portion out there. So there's this single-family category, and then there's a, a combination residential category. Again, this being only permitted, uh, on properties east of Morganza Road. So that's my description, can I answer any questions?
Dan, this isn't what I recall us discussing
Yeah, I think the last time I misinterpreted what I was told, I, I was told to get rid of the whole thing.
Yeah, that's kind of
Yeah, in, in, in further discussions, like, no, 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 we're not against the whole thing, we just want it to be commercial on that, so. We just want it to be commercial, which I think, I think the having it on the other side is good, because this lends itself more to mixed use, almost like the way we're doing it with the M U C and the M U R, this is more business, mixed use. Want to call it that.
Yeah, I, I, I think part of the issue we had with, with the last, uh, plan that fell through over there, I mean, there was, there's that large, that tract that landed there in between, um, Maple Ridge and, um, and Morganza, where just, the, the topography was, is just not you know, doesn't, doesn't lend itself to a lot of yeah, for access and whatnot, so it was kind of a, a narrow finger that kind of cul-de-sac on them back there and gave, gave no access, so, uh, that's one of my concerns, if we're looking at commercial development between Morganza and, and, um, and I seventy-nine is, you know, there's a lot of there's a lot of barriers to being able to use that property for commercial use.
'Cause I think the last discussion was the only access was like up through Lewicki Road and it was right, um, into like those phases there.
Yeah, that, I mean, I was our, I think that was our biggest concern, I mean, everyone please correct me if I'm wrong, but it, yeah, the, the, he had one way in and one way out. And the only other way, the only other ac- potential access point was running out a long finger that kind of started to head towards Morganza that he had a residential plan on, so he was gonna have to put a secondary, if he was gonna put a secondary, second means of access or ingress out of that whole development, it was gonna be cutting through a residential plan. But I don't, but it was very narrow, so I don't know that there was any commercial use in there besides, um
Well, here, here'd be my point. If, if, the problem is when you put in residential, then you have multiple families living back here twenty-four seven. And when, when he was using this property here adjacent to Maple Ridge, he was taking away his ability to make and do whatever he needs to do to get a secondary access in. I think if you remove the residential, you leave it all commercial, then if they have to put, you know, if they have to, you know, put a tunnel in or, or, I'm being exaggerated, or, or a very steep cut and take a large area to do that, they could create an access to secondary access. So my point is if you, if you take out the, his enticement to wanting to create residential right away, let's put a residential plan up here, you sort of force the hand that somebody's gotta come in here and say, I'm willing to spend the bucks to create a secondary access for commercial, and you have enough room to do it. I mean, hi- his answer was, well, well, we just really can't do it, 'cause we have this residential plan in here, well, if you take away the residential plan, you have more length to create a, 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 you know, a, a descending grade to come down and meet Morganza Road.
It's a fair point, I think it was doable, but that was the concern, was that your, your secondary means of access and egress to the commercial development was gonna be through a residential plan, so point is well taken.
I, 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 but I think, I think, again, this is more of a zoning issue for the supervisors, that they don't feel that it's a perfectly zone for residential in this side of, of, of Morganza Road, that it's, it's better served for, for what it was, and I don't think that, honestly, I don't think, at least that they realized it till the first thing they come in with is the residential plan, of course. So.
I completely agree with what you're saying, my only concern was adding that, like, only east of Morganza Road uh, is, how does that impact the rest of the township for zoning, is it just for this area?
Well, this area, this is the only area that's
Okay.
zoned this way.
Okay, that's what I thought, but I was like, I just wanna make sure.
Yeah, they came in and wrote the ordinance specifically for the Sabatino property seven years ago.
I mean, really, if from a business perspective, if they wanna do all commercial behind where Maple Ridge is, then it would be something similar to what has been done in South Fayette. And Maple Ridge would just be the residential area, they're just not the ones manning it.
Correct, yeah, good point.
I'm good with it.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, that cha- that completely changed that discussion.
Yeah, I understand.
I think being arrested in Maple Ridge, I should abstain from this little piece of the discussion.
Well
And if you wanna abstain from the vote, I can under- understand, but but I, but I think your input a- as a representative of the people who live over there would be valuable to the discussion itself.
Well, I know, I could tell you that there was a lot of concern that, a lot of, of impact when people were concerned about even residential being behind them. And so that wouldn't even include all the things that would be involved with commercial, like, um, lighting and noise and larger buildings and all that, that's why um, I think as far as objections from individual homeowners in Maple Ridge, there probably will be a good bit. Um, I'm just, I'm just putting that out there, just so, I, I don't know, but that's how they, that's how it came off before, when it was residential, when, when there was proposed residential.
Yeah, I think the last plan put commercial development on two of the three sides of that property.
Right, and there was, this here was all residential.
Right, and then the other two sides was commercial development right up against the property line. Um, so I think you're gonna get questions on that anytime, anytime you you know, develop a, a, a wooded parcel immediately adjacent to residential,
Right, and, and
you're gonna get pushback.
And the Sabatino group were very accommodating as far as like, meetings to explain things, there were a couple of meetings, at least one or two, to explain to the residents what was being proposed and and, um, different, yeah, so there was communication there, that they were trying to address any concerns, but I'm just putting it out there that, um, you know, you, you do have, because of that area, that, you know, and, uh, a residential area, there probably will be a lot of questions about the commercial district.
Well, there, there
It's already
It would still be required, the, the difference, uh, would be that, I mean, there's a hundred and fifty-foot setback that's required around there's a hundred and fifty-foot setback that's required around the entire residential piece. So, a residential piece next to a commercial piece, it's just like we talked about before, requires a different type of a buffer.
Yes, because if it were residential next to residential, there's less of a- a setback than if there is commercial with- with residential.
And the existing zoning al- allows either residential or commercial or a mix?
Well, the ori- the existing- the existing zoning around Maple Ridge is actually BPD. So, it allows for commercial uses. The- the Interstate Highway mixed use was just really to almost like mimic South Point that you could create a mixed-use development in here. What the supervisors are saying is it- it- that it- they don't want mixed use in here. They would prefer that this remain commercial.
And the mixed use be to the other side of Morganza.
Correct.
Which goes back to, I think, the question I had last, um, last month was, you know, with this mixed-use commercial, mixed-use residential, that it, once we get those issues ironed out, it might be time, i- it- it might be good to relook at everything, um, east of Morganza and maybe rezone that MUC or MUR.
Yeah.
As opposed to the overlay district. Eliminate the overlay district, which, and- and-
Do something different with it.
Do something different with it that- that maybe is a little easier for everyone to digest.
Sure.
Um, but it's a further step. So, today, yeah, I'm fine with keeping it commercial on the other side of Morganza. Any- anybody else?
Yeah, I guess that's fine.
See the gears turning?
Yeah.
Just taking that residential component out of it.
Right, right. Just because it's easier to develop as a commercial parcel, why it's more enticing to be zoned differently.
There's no rezoning involved here, Jack. This would just be a text change to the- to the Interstate Highway Plan.
Yeah, overlay now.
Yeah, so it wouldn't affect parcels at all.
So, the C1 and the BPD would still exist over there. The- the overlay district would just lose its residential component on that side.
Yeah, just as, just in this- this couple areas that we talked about.
Troy? Christie?
I'd make a motion to-
I like it.
I would make a motion to, uh, accept the revision as proposed.
So, that revision would be, uh-
Adding residential only east of Morganza Road to the-
So, modifying the existing Interstate Highway District, Overlay District to reflect, uh, only mixed use on the east side of Morganza Road.
Correct.
You got that, Dave?
Most of it, yeah. Dan, you can help me tomorrow to clean this up.
Yeah, we'll fix it up.
Okay, thank you.
We got a second?
I'll second that.
All right, we got a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Abstain.
Okay, Barbara abstains, motion carries. Yeah, you're good.
So, um, the- the written information that I provided to you, just to give the board, this was sort of an update that we gave at the October meeting, was, um, in September, uh, we were, uh, asked to provide, there were some- some recommendations, uh, and this all happened. The Barney and Lewandowski properties were already, uh, rezoned from R1 to SD. The Fuchs Farm was rezoned from R1 to C1. Uh, the Kozki property was, uh, was rezoned to I1 and R3 from BPD. And then there were some general ordinance updates were approved. Just to recap, that that whole, um, accessory dwelling unit, uh, based upon the solicitor's advice, was removed. So, the, uh, mother-in-law apartment or whatever on the property, she just didn't feel, given that some other decisions that were made regarding that kind of stuff, that it was appropriate to include that at that time. So, that's all been done. That was action in September. So, in September, we also talked about the MUC and the MUR, and I provided an update here, uh, the things that we did. We added the assisted living definition. We added a- an apartment hotel definition. And I think this was based upon some of the comments that came from the Burns and Scallow gentlemen that- that came to our meeting at that time. We added a definition of a major highway, uh, be- because if you recall, we did, um, we were going to limit, uh, some of the development to being located within, uh, 2,000 feet of a major highway access point. Minimum of twenty percent of the land must be dedicated to non-commercial use if this option is selected. And then we added a hospital and apartment hotel if along a state road. We added assisted living, nursing or convalescent, cell storage or veterinary hospins, hospitals as- as used by right in the MUC. And we removed the limit of the single-family tenant in the MUC. If you recall, that was like 10,000, I'm sorry, 20,000 square feet. So, we removed that. So, what you have, what you have attached is the current edited version with those edits made as a part of the ordinance. So, these were all the things that were added. And I- I believe, Jason, I can't remember what- what the wanted, everybody's consensus related to some of this stuff, I think was the last.
Yeah, there was-
We loved this.
There was some, um, discussion, I feel like in the mixed-use residential, we had percentages of single-family versus, um-
Yeah, that was the biggest hang-up. What percentage do we set that at?
Yeah, and I think we were okay with the, I think we were good with the, on the- on the MUR side of it. It was the MUC side that we were struggling with, where should that number be? And- and I think you were gonna go back, Dan, I think you were gonna come back to us uh, with some numbers from like up Cranberry or something, wasn't it?
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, that's the included spread- like little spreadsheet in here. I think it's page four, when you go down, where it has the setbacks, its numbers. For a lot with setbacks. There was another one, though.
No, it was- it was a percentage of, it was a percentage of, uh-
There was like sixty or eighty, I can't remember which one it was.
Hang on, I'll find it.
Yeah, Use Regulations A.
I'm sorry, did you find it?
Um, yeah, number five, Use Regulations. The residential mixed-use district development shall provide a mixture of at least two.
The last page.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, we need some page numbers on this.
I feel like it actually got shorter as we moved through the process, so.
I think the font's smaller.
That's fair.
The area permitted for single-family uses shall be a minimum of thirty percent of the total development area. The area permitted for two-family dwellings and/or townhouses shall be limited to a maximum of ten percent of the total development area. The area permitted for multifamily and garden apartment uses shall be limited to a maximum of ten percent of the total development area. No more than six two-family townhouses or condo dwelling units shall be permitted in a single attached family group or row. Yada, yada, yada. Yeah, and that was, you and, uh, your associate, Dan, had cut-
That's right, yeah, Matt did some checking on that.
Yes.
Well, that was the residential, and I think, yeah, that was the, that part I remember. We- I think we were okay there at the end of the last time we talked about. It was the commercial mixed use. There was supposed to be some type of scale put on residential in that commercial mixed use, wasn't there?
I think that was the types of facilities, the easements, and the accessibility or how close they are to a highway. I think that's what limited it, not the percentages. Where it was like, oh, it has to be front-facing, uses by right required to front state roads. That's- that's where it was.
It- it- it was, it's actually, uh, under E Commercial Mixed Use District, um, three uses by right, C, single-family dwelling. Uh, there's a VI right before it says apartment hotel is lined out. Um, it says a minimum of twenty percent of the land area of the development parcel shall be developed as a non-residential use. I- I think what we were going for there was, we wanted to make sure, because we had mixed-use residential and mixed-use commercial, and there was no cap on the residential makeup of- of the mixture within that mixed-use commercial. So, our concern, Dan and I had the shared concern that somebody might come in and just throw a whole residential development in to mixu- essentially develop as mixed-use residential when we specifically zoned it as mixed-use commercial. So, we were forcing to put at least some commercial component into every development, every parcel development, developed within that MUC. So, they can't just come in and just extend MUR over in the MUC. They have to put a commercial component in.
Yeah, the, um-
And when you said the land, we didn't actually, you know, it was the land. So, if you had a hundred acres, twenty acres would have to be commercial.
Right.
It's still, eighty acres is a big subdivision, too.
Yeah, I- I'm still not sure if that's the right number.
And if you're using mixed, and if you're using a mix of dwellings, you know, if you were put one apartment building in it, you know, it could take a big chunk of that. You know, it wouldn't take much acreage. So, that's why I think we were comfortable on that.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if we were still gonna go bit- bigger than twenty percent required for, um, commercial.
It just is a minimum of twenty percent, so it has to be at least twenty percent. It doesn't mean that they will only do twenty percent.
Right.
Oh, but it could end up being-
That's, we're trying to encourage commercial development and not more residential, not more burden on the- on the, uh, services provided by the township, um, more.
So, I get a good example of this over in South Park, right at the end of the T-line.
Yes.
There's a new development over there called Summit Station. And they put up like two hundred, actually ironically Sabatino did it. They put up like two hundred apartments, and they put a big Ryan single-family townhouse development in. The township made them reserve one large tract right along Bronsall Road for commercial. And they've continued to market that. But even- even like a- a town in, you know, I don't know what South Park's population is. It's probably comparable to Cecil's, it's pretty close. Uh, you know, they- they have their own, they have their own high school. I've never, I don't think I've ever looked at the population, but my point is that they've not been able to market that to a small grocery store because they're- they're dying over there for a small grocery store. A lot of those things that we're seeing around here, and they're really struggling until you reach a certain point to get that, you know. But I think the idea of the MUC was to have more like services, like, I mean, maybe it's just a small shop area that has a restaurant in it, and it might have a dry cleaner and a-
Coffee shop.
Nail salon or something like that, that you have some of the services that are close to the development. I think that was, that's the way sort of the most of these uses are built into here.
Yeah, I'm just, I- I'm just asking of everyone here, because that was the percentage for the two of you, that was one of the big hang-ups last, um, the last meeting, was, you know, we kind of felt like we were all in the spot, like, we gotta pick a percentage, we're like, we can't. We need to sit back and think about this a little more. And I- I just want, is- is everyone okay with twenty percent on that?
I am. The only thing I'm trying to- to recall and to clear the cobwebs out for myself is, um, the representative from Burns and Scallow had provided a very colorful red line, adding a lot of things. I do recall that, and I'm not-
Yeah, we didn't agree with all those.
Yeah, okay, that's what I was making sure.
We went over some of them, but we didn't, I mean, he had other creases.
There was a lot of things that were in there that were-
I think- I think we added the, um, we added the assisted living facility, some of the more-
Yeah.
Uses that weren't as intense.
That was definitely a wish list.
Okay, I didn't- I didn't think they were any of that-
Assisted living facility, nursing convalescent, rest home, the self-storage was added. These were the ones, they're- they're kind of highlighted, um-
I think there was some comment-
And then we added the apartment hotel, hospital, eliminated the twenty beds. So, those, that's kind of the highlight, Christie, of the-
That's what I thought, but I- I was just wanting to make sure that I was remembering correctly.
Actually, I think I made the comment when he said self-storage facility. I think my comment specifically was, "Oh, no, not another one."
You built a lot of residential, you ended up with self-storage.
Yeah, I know. The, um, there was some, uh, feedback, I don't remember where was that, somewhere on one of the Facebook pages, where I think there was a lot of discussion. People would watch the video and were- and were giving feedback on it, and I think they were talking about the language, the terminology for the different, um, businesses. Dan, did any of that filter back to you at any point? Talking about, you know, like, you know, nursing, convalescent or rest home, is that- is that like the- the actual terminology being used nowadays or? And I'm not sure that it's-
I can tell you from my more recent experience that yes, those are all terms that are being used right now. And assisted living is often, uh, developed adjacent-
Yes.
To those facilities, however, um, it doesn't have to be. And the traffic that would be going for assisted living versus a nursing convale- convalescent or rest home is completely different.
I think it would help be help for these percentages for the commercial. It would be helpful, I think, if we had some kind of visuals, because I'm trying to visualize, like, any kind of commercial building or little strip mall or anything else is probably gonna require a good bit more space than, say, groups of townhouses or something like that. So, the twenty percent to me is a little nebulous, like, I, it's hard for me to visualize what we're talking about there.
Well, and I think that's something that we discussed before, too, because, you know, we're- we're putting these ideas together and, you know, the five of us and-
No data.
Yeah, and Dan, we- we all have our, these- these visions in our head of what does mixed-use commercial mean? What does mixed-use residential mean? What's it actually gonna look like when it's built? And the reality is that none of us know. A developer's gonna come in and- and say, "Okay, here's the guidelines they gave me. Now, what can I shoehorn in there?" Right? What can I make mon- what can I put in there to make- to make me money? Because that's what they're, they're developers, they're- they're there to make money. So, they're gonna look at it and say, "What can I put in there to- to make me money?" And- and what they end up, what ends up being built may not be what we envisioned. And that's one of the things that I- I wanted, part of my process with this was to make sure that what we put down kind of made sure that it wasn't something completely different than what we're envisioning.
Well, to- to Barb's point, so, I'm- I'm involved in a project right now. So, um, seventy-five-hundred-square-foot building can house three tenants within it. So, um, that's the seventy-five-hundred square feet. So, if you were, if you were calling that twenty percent, I'm, all I'm saying is that that's not very big. The parcels probably are right around an acre. So, let's just envision if you had a ten-acre site that you just wanted to do some townhouses in a little commercial building. You could very easily do that on an acre of ground. You could make yourself a small little strip or one building or multiple. So, I think the twenty percent- So I think that 20% is, it might be a little bit on the high side, I mean, you can make it smaller, but I think it gives enough flexibility. Again, remember, the goal is to provide the whole, the whole reason for the MUC coming out of the the comprehensive plan, and what the supervisors thought should be for, in, in the mixed use, was to try to put more intense uses along state roads, do less intense stuff off of the state roads. So most of this is gonna be along state roads anyway, would be the MUC when it finally gets zoned. And most of the MUR is gonna be on township roads.
You have two, in two points above the 20%, it ends with saying...
I mean, it, it's, it's, I, I think we looked at three different developments, in terms of like that South Park one I talked about. We looked at the charter development in South Fayette, and then we might have looked at one other charter development that were more kind of, you know. You don't know until you test the ordinance, until you come up with a piece of property. I mean, let's think about another scenario. If you had 100 acres and you had to reserve 20, the developer could pick a piece that's very steep topographically, reserve the 20 acres, and only develop a little piece of that 20 acres for commercial. But he's reserved that portion for commercial. So when you say 20% of the land area, it doesn't dictate the size of the building, and you let the market dictate that. All you're saying is you want to leave enough room to get something...
I guess you make a good point. I, I mean, yeah, you could theoretically take a, and say, yeah, we designate this 20% for commercial, but it's a completely unusable 20% of the property, and, and they just backdoored the entire intent of...
Good.
The ordinance.
Upon this.
And we give no maximum, right? It's only 20% minimum, and that's it?
When you say 20% of the land area,
Yeah.
I mean, you could apply...
Can we say usable land area? But, or does that become too...
Then you have to define what is usable land area, get out a definition for that.
Is that a reasonable, is, is that something where you, you can create a definition for?
I mean, in Western Pennsylvania, if you have a 20-acre parcel, you're probably only able to use half of it. So that's 10 acres.
That makes, that changes that.
If you say usable, if you say 20% usable, then they probably have to have 40 acres to make it usable, would be my point. So if you had a 100-acre tract, you said 20% usable, you'd take 40 out of those acres to be commercial.
I think that'd be better for, from our perspective, than having them come in and say, yeah, we're gonna put in this, develop, we're gonna develop this 100 acres in the mixed-use commercial, and we're not gonna put any commercial component in because we designated the 20 acres that's completely useless. So to, to our point for what we're trying to accomplish, or at least what the Board of Supervisors are trying to accomplish, and that's trying to help them get there. I think maybe redefining that, not just saying total land area, but defining that more clearly to actually get us to where we want to be, might be the way to go.
But the way this is written, a minimum of 20% of the land area, that doesn't, that doesn't say that a specific part of it, it's just 20% of the land area as a whole.
Correct. Right. So you could have a, you could have a 20-acre, that 20 acres that's a steep ravine that cuts through the property, and they're gonna designate that as the commercial.
But it's to be developed. That's part of the sentence there, to be developed.
Yes. I'm guessing 20% is pretty standard in Western PA.
20%.
20% commercial.
Yeah.
In, in this type of district.
Sure. I mean, so, so to your, so everybody's point, so if I have a 10-acre parcel, and I need to develop 20% of it, that's two acres, you'd probably get an acre usable out of that, which would be big enough to put, like I was just describing, like some small shops.
Your 7,500 square foot?
Yeah.
I think 20% is the number.
Dan, I think you've nailed it.
I'm not, again, until you test something, somebody comes in with it, you really, you really don't know. I mean, you can't force the market. I mean, the only thing that you can do is set it up that it could be used if that, and, and all I know is it's more desirable now for communities to have, when you build bigger plans, to have some local services available.
Agreed.
Okay.
So this is encouraging that, and that is a good thing, and everything about it is beautiful.
Yeah, I'm rereading it back, and I, I think that is in there. It says it must be developed as a non-residential use, so, so probably can't just say that it's 20 acres, or 20% of useless property then, right?
Right, because when it comes in for the, it says, show me your plan.
Yeah.
We're developing that 20 acres. So they would grade it out, like in the case of the South Park project, they graded it all out. It's a big flat pad ready for development.
Yeah, it's got...
So what you encourage them is, when they're doing the overall development, to prepare the pad. Because everybody wants a pad-ready site, it's, you know.
Okay.
Yeah, so when they're looking at the 20%, it's, it, it's regardless of what areas are developed, easily developed or not. It's just 20% period, a minimum, shall be developed.
Well, 20% gotta be developed, which means that the non-developable portions are what's gonna eat into the residential component.
Yes.
So that's, I'm feeling better about it.
But, but it...
I'm glad we talked about it.
It's my point, and again, this is, this is, that's why I brought up the South Park thing, I can go back to this, is they did all the residential, and they've come back and said, hey, we'd like to put a couple more townhouses in the township. It's like, nope, can't. Gotta reserve that for commercial development.
Yeah. Okay. I feel better about it. I do.
So we ready to move it on to the supervisors?
Yes.
For a review and...
I think so.
Yes.
To get hashed out and tore apart again.
I, I don't, you know.
It's not a bad thing.
No, no.
Do we have a motion?
You're all looking at me. I'll make a motion to approve the draft, MUR and MUC ordinance, with the modifications listed as discussed, and all items having been listed on the discussion page.
Yeah, they're already in, in this draft, so we'll just accept the changes and send it to the supervisors that way.
Yes, that.
Okay.
I'll second.
Barb got it. Barbara.
You can. Dave, it's okay.
Alright, we have a motion to approve and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Wasn't as bad as I thought it was gonna be. Correspondence announcements, any other discussion? The, the work in, in the park, looks like it's been coming along real nice. Uh, Jack and I were talking about it earlier this week. Hoping, hoping they're gonna be wrapping up in the next few weeks, where they're permitting.
They're down, they're down to the other end of the park now, so.
The final pool.
Yeah. I don't see anything new coming in. I think they got all the rock out of there and just took that grass, but pretty muddy over there right now.
Spring will do amazing things.
Well, I think the people that use that, you know, the walkways quite a bit, really will pay the price as far as, you know, the mud, you know, in the long run, I think it's a good project. It's gonna make the fishing dirty a lot more beneficial. I think all the fishing in Cecil Park's gonna be enhanced.
I think it's a great enhancement to the park and to the community in general. That's why I wanted to bring it up.
Part about it is, we don't have to pay for any of it.
That too.
And we get a credit for our, our pollution control plan.
Yeah, PRP.
So it's, it's a, yeah, for the PRP, so it's a big, it's a big savings.
Wonderful. Now, since we talked about the zoning map, has there been any communication at all with the Sabatino or his property group?
No, the last commu, well, the last communication was a letter that the solicitor sent to them that said that their applications closed now. So they've not come back with anything.
So we have no idea at this point what, there's just nothing.
No pending applications, there's nothing, there's nothing on the township docket to deal with, with that development. I don't know, I didn't hear that. What happened? Oh, yeah, I mean, he, he was upset when TOA came in, because I think at one time he had the option to buy the TOA property, and he didn't buy it. He never realized that somebody else would come in and get it, so.
I know, but you're right, Dan, it's, um, it's talking to people, and I think they go back at it again, they have to start, start over.
Oh, yeah, 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 they do. Well, yeah, they I just hope they sell it to somebody else.
Yeah, with South Lake, I mean, it's a good five, oh, but I don't know if you've heard of Crown Castle is staying
Yes.
in Cecil, which is a, it's a good thing. We have another one, I saw in the newspaper, that we have another company coming in, so, you know, we have five empty buildings, hopefully that's gonna take up one of them, so we can keep it down to four.
Hold back the 100 or so occupancy hours.
The market will come back, it's just gonna take time, that's all.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
8:47.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Adjourned. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Short and sweet.
Oh, yeah, that's what it was.
It could have been worse.